We don't have a final figure on what we're getting, you're doing.
We are currently live.
No, no final figure, no. It's all guesses. I could tell you when we're getting. But I can't tell you what we're getting.
Okay. All right. Good evening and welcome to the 5:00 PM work session of the Village and Mariner Porter Trustees. This is a budget work session. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on revenues and expenses. Need a motion to open this meeting?
No move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, I talked, we talked to the budget folks and I told them that they could have the first 15 minutes of the meeting. So on, we have Ellen, Ed, Lynn, and Glenn, our attendees. Folks from the Budget Committee, who would like to give the presentation tonight? Please raise your hand. Okay, we have Lynn, we have Mr. Aubrey. Augie, can you promote Mr. Aubrey? Man who needs no promotion.
Got a lot of them, I bet.
Right. Hey Lynn, if you could unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, how are you?
Hi, good. How is everyone? Charles, Charles was going to make the presentation and from what I can tell, Charles is not with us yet. Is that correct?
He's not appearing on the screen.
Okay. Ellen, you want to do this because you're Vice Chair? Or how would you want to proceed? I'm fine doing it.
Augie, do me a favor, promote Ellen too. This way you could tag team it.
Sure, okay.
Hi Ellen, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Hi, no Lynn, you could do it.
Okay, sure.
Because you did it so well during our meeting the other day.
He'll be there to second see you.
Okay, I think the members of the board, I know the members of the board received a document from us before the weekend, I believe it was last Friday, which, which went through the budget and our observations and recommendations. I will just start right now going through the five or six key points in that document. And then, you know, my colleagues can add anything that they would like to add. Obviously, given where we are in the budget, on the one hand, we certainly got the budget process started early as, as Jerry pointed out, earlier than before. But also that enabled us to be able to meet, talk among ourselves and prepares a document prior to the adoption of the budget, which we haven't done in the past. So starting early was clearly helpful. And, and, and we think there are some things we can do in, among the committee and with, and with the village manager and so on to help improve things. So we do recognize that obviously this is still, still near the end, but still a work in progress. The, the, the bigger picture issue was that the underlying assumptions in the current proposed budget, what we called the tentative, is that the underlying assumptions appear to be that we're going to have a strong economy into the next fiscal year and the village will be operating nearly normal. Certainly, we've seen that, for example, in Parks and Recreation and other departments with the expected activities for next year. Related to that is, is we're seeing a a large increase in revenue, particularly non-operating in a disproportionate, smaller increase in expenses. And at least in the course of the budget workshops, we have seen certain expenses, which I believe Jerry and Dan and Augie may have said have to be added to the, added to the budget. So we saw a disproportionate increase in revenue, particularly non-property tax revenue, compared to the change in expenses, which is problematic. And our view that the increase in non-property tax revenue is optimistic. Now, given the remaining open items, clearly the board will have to set some priorities, both for the operating budget as well as the capital budget. And we'll talk about the capital budget in a minute. But obviously, an important issue that was at the last budget meeting was the village attorney and the total costs of that position, supporting it and so on. And the net costs, if there are any savings with contract attorneys. But that's an important issue and the trustees would have to make a judgment where that fits into all of the other priorities. So it's important, given what we still see as some uncertainties for next fiscal year. Now, what we saw based upon the assumptions that we came away with in the budget documents we worked from was it appeared before applications of reserves that there would be a deficit, I'll use that term, in the current fiscal year, okay? Which would have to be filled with reserves presumably. So when we think about that, if that indeed is the case, then we have to figure out where we stand relative to the village policy on reserves and and how those reserves would be, how those reserves would be replenished. One source, obviously, is the, is the American Recovery Plan. And it was Jerry, thanks Jerry, shared with us, the, the rather sizable allocations appear, appeared, at least to me, to the town of Mariner and Rite Town. So, which is certainly, certainly good news. It was our understanding that we would not discuss the capital budget until April 13. Nonetheless, there are certain issues that we think are important to discuss, which were enumerated in the document shared with, with the board and Jerry and Dan and Augie.
Lynn, Lynn, let me interrupt you for one second. Trustee Natchez, would you please mute yourself if you're going to be on the phone?
We can mute him if you can't.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay. Um, and then finally, the final point, I just want to make sure, you know, it was heard about the capital budget. And we raised some issues with that, as well as the debt service account in the document we shared with members of the board.
Yeah.
And then finally, something that we've discussed, and actually, that was a great job done initiated by, by Jerry and his colleagues, and which we should do a similar exercise for the operating budget, was thinking beyond just the one-year time horizon. And Jerry and his colleagues put together a five-year capital plan, which was reflected in the document, the final budget document posted online. And however, which seemed to bear no relationship with the capital budget reports we've seen. So I think there has to be some, a continuation of that process, merely updating it year to year, as well as doing the, doing a similar plan for the, for the operating budget. Obviously, the current year was a challenging year for a whole variety of obvious reasons, with the pandemic and the difficult economy. And certainly, Jerry and his colleagues have had their hands full, no doubt about that. So we certainly understand that. But I think if we are heading back to a more normal environment, then, once the budget's adopted and we get past the initial startup of the new fiscal year, we can consider those two elements and that particular recommendation. So that was a quick run-through of the key points. I wanted to ask Ellen or my colleagues if they have anything to add that I might have skipped over or gone through too quickly.
I think, Augie, Victor is, is an attendee. Yeah, promote Victor to panelist, please.
Um, Lynn, I have nothing to add other than something you did speak over quickly. We're all here to help in any way we can.
Thank you, Ellen. Can I just ask Augie to clarify? I mean, there's, there's a couple of things, I think. One is, you know, there have been, I don't know if you've been made aware, but there have been new revenue projections by the staff, which toned down predictions.
Yeah.
So that, that's one. And the other is, I just want to ask Mr. Fusco to talk to that point that Mr. Aubrey brought up about a deficit and the, the the use of fund balance. Because I think, I think that there's, there's a relationship there that's not being fully explained, and I just want them to know.
From what I could see, the Budget Committee projected a deficit both off of adjusted budgets. Am I correct, Lynn?
I, yes, and assuming the $600,000 use of the fund balance, yeah.
That presentation is not in conformity with GAAP. It's pretty much, you know, other accounting form of presentation. To say it's a loss is not totally accurate. What that, the adjusted budget is made up of is the $600,000, the prior year encumbrances, also the current year budget amendment and adoptions to the budget. So matching up revenues and expenses without breaking out those components, it's not really accurate to say that, that that's a deficit. Those differences have been fully funded.
And, and how does that usually work out at the end of the year?
Well, at the end of the year, what happens is, is that we already appropriated from bum balance all the additional items needed. So the difference will be funded from fund balance, guys, as it was approved during the year. But currently this year, at the end of the year, it's also, our village manager is on top of the expenditures and he's already put safeguards in place. He's reduced all spending, anything over 500 requires his permission. So we're projecting right now a profit of half a million dollars at the end of this year, of actual revenues and actual expenditures. So that pretty much is what sums it up.
Well, Augie, I'm sorry, this is Dan. Two things. First, I think Charles has joined as a attendee. He's been having trouble getting in, and I apologize for the lost conversation before. For me to try and work somebody into computers is really something. Anyway, the second is, can you, I hear what you said, but can you give us the big items that what took the million and a half potential deficit to the half million, you know, surplus?
You want me to list them up? I'd have to get them. I presented them in the March report, what made up the 1.5 million.
Yeah, I have them here.
On the fund balance page, I did an analysis showing you that it's prior year encumbrances, it's the $600,000 plus 1.5 million in approved amendments from the board. I wasn't ready, Fat, I'm sorry.
No, Augie, the approved amendments are expenditures?
The approved amendments are revenues and expenditures that adjusted budget, so you have an adjusted budget.
Okay, so those are in what was called the adjusted budget. Those are, at least to the point of that report. The report that was used in the document we shared with you was February 5th. The February 5th document that you, that you appreciate, much appreciated, converted into an Excel form. But that includes amendments to that date, the expenses and revenues.
And go ahead.
Yes, so I just want to get a yes or no on that, because then we have, that's been accounted for if the answer is yes.
The adjusted budget has both, once again, has the $600,000, has the prior year encumbrances and all the amendments that are approved during the year.
Okay. Of which, of which, Augie, 8745 and 8746 are part of that.
Yes.
A what? Say that again.
So 8745 is the pandemic response money and 8746 is the tropical storm SIEs money that we needed to, to deal with the disasters, both declared disasters. And so that money is inclusive of the adjusted, is in the adjusted budget.
That's correct. And keep in mind, Jerry, also, we're not, in our projections of March, we're not including the reimbursement that we're going to receive. We're projecting $500,000 without that reimbursement. Because in essence, you have to, unless it's doing payable for one year, we can't account for it.
Right, we're not allowed to account for it.
And then, and if you, if we receive it in the future year, it'll be shown as a refund of prior year's expenditure revenue.
That's correct. I can tell you that we're, we're right there at the line as far as the tropical storm money. Dan and I, we have weekly meetings with FEMA. Our deadline to complete everything is, what do you say, Dan, April 4, right? April 4, April 5?
I think, yes, it's, it's that week, it's either the 4th or the 6th.
So it's the week of the 5th or the 5th of April is the deadline for us to submit all changes, all adjustments, any missed items. For instance, we have an invoice that we were seeking reimbursement for and we come to find out, we haven't paid for it, not that we didn't want to pay for it, but that they never billed us for it. So we immediately called the company, we asked them to send us an invoice, we're trying to get it paid on a, on an abstract. This way I can include it into the, the reimbursement application for the, for the tropical storm. So we're, but we may not get, Lynn, Lynn and Budget Committee, we may not get that money, tropical storm money reimbursement this year, that's why we can't count for it. We may get it, but it's, it may not happen.
If you, you mean this fiscal year?
Correct, this fiscal year, for June 1, right, for June 1.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we should get too hung up, especially with the, the members of the board, about the accounting issue here. That's, you know, that's, that's kind of, I mean, I think the overall point, it, from what I'm hearing is once all, I'll say, the ins and outs are accounted for, we're going to end up fine this year using $600,000 of reserve.
That is, yes.
That, I think that's just in summary, what I'm hearing from, from Augie, okay.
Right.
Glenn, just, just so you understand, it's $600,000 in reserves plus the 1.5 million in amendments that were approved.
Okay, okay, I hear, I hear.
It's more than $600,000.
Yes.
But yeah, he was just pointing out that, that, that's part of it too.
Yeah.
And I just asked for the explanation, just because when you hear the numbers without context, sometimes it sounds daunting, right? And at least to me, you know, this isn't, you know, my, my forte. So I, I like to hear, because I know from past experience that there's, there's, there's always more to the story.
Yes.
Wait, can I just ask a question? I, I need to dummy this down a little. So we had the $600,000 from reserves, but then there's the million and a half. So does that mean we're taking 2.1 out of the reserves?
So far, we appropriated $600,001.5, that is correct.
Okay, so if we have a 500,000, 500, yeah, 500,000 surplus, net-net is 1.6, not 2.1.
No, if we have a 500,000 surplus, that's based on actual expenditures and revenues, that means you use none of the fund balance.
That's right, yeah.
That's a big swing.
Yeah.
So, so from last year to this year?
Yeah.
The, the fund.
If, if you really want to, if you really want, I'm sorry, Tom.
Right, finish, finish.
So basically, if you really want to dwell on it, we're not going to finish off this year with a $500,000 gain. It's actually going to be $2.6 million overall, again, in budgetary accounts.
But we net 500 at the end.
That's correct.
So which means we take nothing from the reserves. That's where I'm getting hung up.
That's what it means.
Okay.
Victor.
Trustee to call. But just to follow up on Ellen, they will use, the, the proposal is to use 600 of surplus to start to, to, so, so it will be used, it kind of kicks in before they finish the accounts.
Yeah, right.
Correct? So it's kind of, it's timing of accounting, so I think we hang up a lot on accounting.
Yeah.
But, but my, my first question is, before even we go to, we, we are, the last receipt revenue control is 34, 234, 260. So we're down 2,700 and change, 741 actually. Of that, like a million comes in, can you explain how it would end the year and then the surplus? Yes, in very basics. I know your projections can be fine, but I just want to understand it.
How?
We're down, we're, we're at 90%, we're 8% below.
All right, so Victor's looking at the revenue control report of March 19, the bottom of page eight. That's what he's looking at.
Okay, give me one second, please.
Pop that open.
Okay, I have that open, Victor, go ahead.
What are the lines that you're expecting to fill in that gap, that deficit?
The 2.7?
Yes.
2.741? Where's the 2.741 balance?
He's looking at the March 2021 revenue report?
March, it's March 19, the one I have on my desk, August, March 19, revenue report, page eight.
Let me run, can you share your screen, Victor, or show it to me, or let me run the report real quick? My apologies, I wasn't ready to talk about current revenues.
But it's been more or less the same, we've raised this a couple of times. How are we going to make the, the revenue projections?
As of right now, the way I'm looking at the revenues for the current year, we, we're about $150,000 short of what we actually projected. We're going to receive all the revenues we projected for.
That's what I want to understand. And actually, there are not too many lines, you can, they're like 10 lines.
I think what Victor's asking is which lines will we, will, will we receive money to make up the 2.7? And
Probably the biggest one's going to be the sales tax, because I think we budgeted.
So we still want seven down.
Yeah, but that's, well, I think we budgeted, what, 3.2 million in the budget? And I think we're, we're, we're projected, I think we're going to make 4 million, so that's almost 100,000 of that right there.
Well, the, the big balance that they're going to come in, Victor, are the sales tax and the mortgage tax that's expected to come in, to complete this year.
Oh, you say sales tax is a million 69. It's expected in the last quarter.
This is kind of the problem with doing revenues early, because you, you, you don't have this information in front of you.
No, we always have the same issue, we, we work on the projections.
Tom, right now, we're doing current revenues, we're not doing budgeted revenues.
Right, I know that, but usually when we're looking at it, that has come in already. Go ahead, go ahead.
Mortgage tax is 19, you, you say it's expected just less than $100,000, $90,000, we are at, it was budgeted at 375 and it has receipts are 283. And to balance that, we would need 91. So that is still a big gap, like a million point six, that I don't understand.
Right, so, so, so I, I need to, Augie, the report that you give me, the projected cash flow results of operation?
I don't have that at hand, Jerry, I'm, I'm at home. I try to pull it up and I'm getting network errors.
So, so let me do it, let me do it, let me scan it and put it up on my screen. Victor, this will explain by month what we expect to receive and it, and it ends up being the 500, 500,000 at the end.
Is that in the, is that in the last report? I have the page, we can, we all have the pages, or you can scan it.
I can't put it up on my screen, I gotta, you're not going to be able to see it until I scan it, let me scan it.
Yeah, I, I need to see it if I'm going to understand it.
Yeah, let me try to download it real quick.
This is useful, because we can understand what's happening right now.
I'll show it to you.
Then we can understand what's going to happen. At least in the first half of the year.
I think also on the sales tax, Victor, we only, we may have only posted two of the four payments. So it might be more than 1 million that we're getting in sales tax.
This will show you, hold on, hold on, hold on, this will.
This was three. Currently receipts reflect three-quarter payments.
Okay.
Let me click a couple of buttons here.
Dan, Dan, you just mentioned something important. When, when you record a revenue, is it when it's received or when you receive notification as to the amount?
When received.
Okay, that's, that's, that's typical. Now, presumably from a forecasting point of view, however, if I know I'm getting another million in sales tax at the end of April, from a forecast point of view, which is not the same, obviously, as an accounting document, you can, you can record the million dollars and say, I know because I've been notified, but the bureaucracy takes so long that I won't receive the money until 30 or 60 days from now. So, so I'm just trying to understand, when you say you're doing a forecast, the basis of those judgments, is it when you received or when you, when you know the amount from a forecasting point of view?
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, thanks.
Make it a little bigger. That's better.
Okay, my, my mouse is on February, March, April, May, last day of May, and these are the totals. So if you look across our May payment, we're expecting 1.678 in sales tax.
That's correct.
Mortgage in May, we're expecting 250K.
How are we, how, how are we calculating that to 650?
That, that's, Augie, Augie will give you those answers, I wouldn't. I can just put up the screen.
Because the entire, the entire was 375, I mean, okay.
Well, the first payment, the first payment that we received was 283,637. With the unstruck the pandemic, there's been a bidding flux of people migrating into Westchester County and Dutchess County, causing the real estate to go up, and there's been a lot of turnover of sales, it's a seller's market. That enhanced, increased the mortgage tax more than what we actually projected. So the first payment was 283, we conservatively forecasted 250,000 for the second payment. But as you know, the summer's coming up and during the summer months, sales goes up on real estate.
What was the original budget for, for the
I gotta look for it.
375, so are you?
Yeah, I mean, our, our experience, Victor. Yeah, I mean, our, our experience, Victor, is showing that, uh, we will realize more than $375,000 of revenue. It's a, it's a revised budget estimate.
So that has been moved, okay.
Yeah, I mean, based on the current trend, we, we forecast that we will receive a larger sales tax payment, I'm sorry, uh, mortgage, second half mortgage tax payment than, uh, previously anticipated. And, and usually that the, um, the second tax, second mortgage tax payment that we receive is, is usually based on the, the summer, uh, market, which is when people move in, uh, for the more, the more people move in in the summers. So we, we anticipate a larger revenue there.
Larger than.
It's usually two payments?
It's two payments, that's correct.
Yeah.
Usually two payments, so this will be, okay, so this will be a higher. So you're expecting a second payment of 250?
Yeah, I'm being a little conservative. I think it's going to be greater than 283, but I went the conservative route and only projected out 250,000. I'm sorry if I interrupted you, Jerry.
No, it's okay. No, 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 no issue.
When does, and that money comes in when?
May. Oh, it gets posted in May.
Okay, that's line two. I'm sorry, then we can continue.
And it's to get 12.5 a month, but, but.
There's too many.
Sorry for jumping in. I've just, I'm just want, if you could explain the table a bit, i- if you just go across the sales tax line. So the full amount expected for the current year for sales tax, it has 2.7 million on this table. But of, but based upon my understanding, it's going to be close to 4 million, if not at 4 million. Um, am I correct on that, or am I misreading something?
You're misreading. You're looking at the 21, 21, 2022 budget, which was originally projected at 3.9.
Okay.
This year, we're projecting to receive 2.63 total.
In sales tax?
In sales tax, that's correct, Glenn. And once again, my sales tax projections are conservative.
Okay.
I can be more aggressive, but I'd rather, you know, be conservative and be safe. If I get more money, I'm sure the board won't be upset. But I have to bring in numbers that are realistic, and I have to answer to the manager. You don't want the manager upset.
Oh, you, you, you would not be a good accountant if you were anything other than conservative.
Clarify, Augie, please, because I'm confused also. Isn't the, the, uh, expected amount for sales tax this year 3.2? And if that's the case, it's not on the table. I think that's what Lynn is, is raising.
Expected amount is 3.2 for this year?
So the, the expected amounts don't appear here?
The budget amount is 3.2. The expected amount that we're going to receive in total is 2.7.
So la- last year, when you were doing the budget, you projected 3.2, but it's coming in, it's coming in heavier than that.
No, it's coming in less than that. Last year, when Latimer came in and told us we had the 1%, we budgeted 3.2. Then we were hit with a pandemic. The numbers went down.
But didn't, but the numbers went down, didn't we reflect that in the budget?
No, no, Augie, the, I think the are, the, the biggest hit in the sales tax occurred in the second quarter of 2020, which was the prior fiscal year. Every quarter since June of 2020, uh, we've been generating about a million, about a million dollars in sales tax.
The point is, this table missed, it is, it, where it says adopted 2021, there's, there are no numbers, and those are the reference numbers that we, we should be looking at. If we, if we're expecting to 2.7, the reference point is 3.2. For, for, uh, for, um, mortgage tax, the reference point was 375. We are expecting to get 250. Right? So that's why this table is, is confusing us.
No, we're expecting to get 250 in this, in this, in maze payment, in this second payment.
But that's his budget.
Total.
I- is that total, or is that the second payment?
That adopted column there that you see, Victor, is basically to show on the bottom, uh, the adopted appropriations, their summary numbers. They weren't meant to be detailed numbers.
Yeah, we don't work out it that way.
Okay, in May, what are you projecting that we're going to get from the, the mortgage?
250.
250.
Just in May?
Right.
In May. A mortgage tax.
And we already received.
What will we have realized in mortgage tax for the year?
For the year, we would have realized a total of
A 443. Uh, I'm sorry, 543.
Five, yeah, 543 total.
543, 637. The first payment was 287, 283,637. We're expecting the second payment, our May payment, to be approximately 250,000, 250. That would give us, that would give us five, that would give us five 40, no.
So you're more, you're more than doubled what you've been expecting last year.
In mortgage tax, yes.
I'm sorry, we need a consolidated table because it's really, you know.
Right, but.
I've been trying to understand this, like, the last couple of months. Now, that's why I now, it didn't make sense to me, and now we're, we're finally, we get, we get to look at the numbers, and, and that's why I, I've been. But I think we need a consolidated table. That's my point.
Yeah, but, but we didn't know we needed to prepare that for this evening. We thought we were going to go over the revenue projections for the next budget and the expenses for the next budget. We can give you the adopted and what we're exceeding from the adopted or what we think we're going to, um, miss on what we, what we anticipated. For instance, if we anticipated 2.3 million in sales tax, and we're, we're telling everyone that we're going to bring in 2.763 million, we can show you that on this. We already have the work already done. We can show you that. I didn't know we were supposed to bring it tonight because we didn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't prepared for this.
And I, I'm not just meaning it's for tonight. I think, I think we've been asking and talking about this topic, so I just think consolidating it and circulating will, will clarify a lot of things. So it's not about pointing at times, or it's just to be, to be, to be, uh, you know, productive, to, to, to really understand and crunch the numbers. I think that's that helps us with this year and the overall discussion and, and the revenues for discussion today, which is what can we expect for next year?
Yeah, so why, why don't we, why don't we move on to what we're here for is, uh, next year's budget and revenues and expenses?
But it flows from one to the next. That's why it's not the different.
I know, but we, we've, we've, we've chewed on this long enough. We got to get to this year. Who was it? Jerry or Augie who's presenting?
Revenue. Augie, can you post up revenue?
Absolutely. If you could stop sharing your screen, uh, Jerry, please.
Go ahead.
Is Charles on? If I could ask those, Charles? I don't see him.
Charles? Charles in the, um, he's on as a. attendee.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see him.
And Glenn has a question.
Glenn has a question. One second.
All right, take Glenn's question and then, you know, we'll, we'll do it other questions at the end. We'll just take Glenn now.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, uh, just a quick one on the, uh, sales tax. Are, are we reflecting seven months worth of sales tax this year? Or six months of sales tax this year? Because our, we start in June and then the payments are, uh, in three-month segments. So do we separate June out when we get our first payment and then get two payments of three months each? In other words, what month are we up to when we talk to sales tax? Are we up through December?
We are up through December.
Okay, and just, I, I wanted to do it before. I realize that we're, um, due two more payments and it's about 4 million. My question is that we're, uh, there's a 2.7 million dollar gap between expected revenues of every revenue comes in and expected expenses. I realize the revenues are probably going to come in a little bit on the high side, but I can see about a million dollars worth of savings on the expense side. I'm not sure if I can, I see 2 million dollars worth of savings on the expense side.
Okay, we, we, we'll, we'll do that when we go through the numbers now.
First page.
That, that's fine. And on the sales tax, um, the last two months, we are minus 4.9% in collected sales tax for January, and we're minus 2.8% sales tax for February. That's according to New York State, what Westchester has collected. Uh, they collected 115 million point nine last year, and for the first two months of this year, they collected 111.3. And I'll save the rest of the questions for the, uh, next year budget as we go along. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So on the very, very right, the furthest column to the right, you can see what we've reduced in this tentative budget and what we've, uh, increased in the tentative budget. And, um, if you look at that column to try to expedite this meeting, since we've already spent 45 minutes, is any questions regarding that? Obviously, if you're looking at negatives, that's because we're forecasting lower. Um, if you're looking at positives, we're forecasting higher. We have changed it. Uh, we did, um, reduce, um, sales tax forecasted revenue for 2022 budget from 3.97 down to 3.666. We have, um, increased building department fees because I can tell you our building department is booming. Um, but we have reduced some items. We reduced the hotel occupancy tax because other than me, no one else is going to hotels. So we're, we're, we make adjustments as a forecast, our best estimate regarding that. The 3.97 in sales tax, the reason we reduced it, Augie, Dan and I, is because of the conversations we had from all the budget meetings prior to this budget meeting. And we kind of felt that maybe we should be even more conservative on going in and, uh, looking at the sales tax. Any questions on this page?
Yeah, just let me ask some of the sales tax. This, the, the projections for the 22 budget, uh, where do they stand in relationship to what we projected for 21?
From 20, from 21, we expected, we, we, we've, we budgeted, we anticipated revenue of 3.2 million. And if you look at the middle of the page, almost smack in the middle of the page.
Yeah.
Right? We got 2.130 so far.
Okay, so we're going from 3.2 million, but we're going up $466,000.
That is correct, Mary. Yep, that's the question. Yep, yep.
I, I, I think that that's attainable. So the question, Jerry, is, I think that was raised, is the revenues projected for next year, 21, 22
Uh huh.
is higher than 2019, 20, 19, 20, correct?
It is correct, yes.
And.
So there, there is a bit of.
Dan, hang on a second. Dan, let trustee Nat just finish.
So the, the question is, what are the major components of the increase?
In August of 2019, we got the 1% tax increase.
Westchester County raised, uh, sales tax and they shared it with the community.
That's the component. That's, that's, that's why it's higher, Dan. In our opinion, that's why it's higher.
And it just, it just one thing, if, if you look at what we made in 2020 is 3.74 million dollars. That included a couple of, I think that included a couple of months where we still were operating under the old sales tax rate. When we prepared the original budget for 2020, 21, um, we were estimating it was 3.6, 3.7 million in sales tax. Once the pandemic hit, uh, all the municipalities got together with the county, and the county, at the county's suggestion, they said, uh, instead of, you know, basing your sales tax on what the current, uh, limits were, we recommend you adopt the same number you had before we implemented the sales tax increase. So that's why we had the 3.2 million dollars last year. As I originally, we were going to, our forecast was 3.6, 3.7 for the current fiscal year, but we lowered it because of the conversations with the county. Uh, but as you can see, our, our experience is pretty good so far with the sales tax.
So the question, Jerry, you indicated that you've increased the building department fees because the building department is booming.
Yeah. But we're lower.
Say again?
But we're still lower than, than 2019.
Okay, because what's happened is we have a lot of smaller projects going on, but not a large, a lot of larger projects where the major fees came from in the last two years.
Yeah, I, I will agree with that. I, I do agree with that, but what we have is a, a serious, um, increase in, um, the improvements at home, uh, pools and other, um, that we believe will, will, um, will bring us to the 48,300 that we, that we need. We could be off by a little, not saying that, you know.
I, I'm not, I'm not worried about the pennies. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to get the big picture.
Yeah, there's a lot of, lot of small applications to the board. I think I might have shared with the board a couple of uh, work-from-home emails that, um, that Matthew sent me, and the amount of permits that are coming through are significant, but you're right. I mean, uh, no arguing, the big ones are not really coming, coming forward yet. The small ones, there are many, many, many more small ones.
You know, because all these houses, all these houses are flipping, uh, which is going to help our mortgage tax, but people flip their house, do over the kitchen, do bathroom.
And then they fix them up. That's right. That's right.
All right, let's, let's continue on.
Next, next page, Augie, please. Is this already the next page? No. Page two of 10.
One brief comment on the sales tax, if I may, before we move on. Uh, I, I, I looked around. Larchmont, for example, who just finished, uh, for, uh, did did a little lower than last year. Last year was 900. They, this year decided to go a little lower, 850. Also town. So I, 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 I understand your, 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 your explanation.
Uh huh.
Uh, but I, 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 I think some municipalities are looking at this more conservative. Uh, so I, I think we probably need to
Hold on.
Look at this and revisit it in a couple of months because I think we're, 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 we're we're being very optimistic, which I, I hope it is. I hope it is. There's, there's, there's constructions, there's turnaround, there's, there's a seller's market that you said. Or anyway, there's, there's, but, but, but I think we, we are going, we're going significantly higher where other municipalities are, are really staying stagnant or lower. So, so that is that we're really going, uh, we're really going aggressive on this one. I just want to make that, that, that note for, for the record or for reference or future discussions.
Okay, you know, I just want, I want to point out for the record, uh, is that the town adopted their budget uh, in January.
Yes.
So the, the town's budget last year was adopted before the pandemic hit. So they didn't have the time to, uh, make up the difference, you know, they, they didn't budget for a lower sales tax last year. So what I'm saying is they didn't reduce their sales tax projection because their budget was already, uh, locked in stone. So basically, you know, it, it wasn't like us who lowered our sales tax projection, uh, because we still had time. They were already locked into the sales practice, tax. Because we still had time. They were already locked into the sales practice tax projection. Of, you know, gaining the benefit of that one percent that Jerry talked about. So it, it, it's the town and the villages, not apples to apples. You know, the, the fact that they kept it the same. Even though, you know, i- is kind of, I think, good because they probably didn't make up as much as they were gonna make up. But they hadn't lowered it like we had lowered it. So it, it, it's not analogous to use the town.
Right, Mayor. That's why I went to look at Larchman, for example, which is discussing the same issue right now and other municipalities around us.
So on this one, we lowered police detail. When we put the budget together. We anticipated that a lot of the work. At the top, police traffic detail reimbursement.
Make it bigger.
One thousand six hundred. See it on the screen?
Can you make it bigger? It's very small to see.
Okay, so last year, we, we, we adopted the budget with. Two hundred and seventy thousand. We're getting very close to that number, so we're hitting what we need to hit. But we are. We understand. Let me put it this way. In my experience, you can't have the level of construction that we're currently experiencing on the roads. With what we're doing right now, so it will tail off. So what we did was we did decrease it by twenty five, over twenty five percent. There may be, that may be extremely conservative. Because now they have, at least Con Ed, has an awareness that they cannot. Utilize flag people. In these very difficult streets and areas where a very congested community because we're small and. Because of our, our location. So they have to use police and it's the only way that we control. I think that, that one eighty seven, that we, that the actual in two thousand nineteen. That's probably because we weren't on top of it as much as we should have been, and now we are on top of it. And we make sure that police traffic detail is utilized where it is. In addition to that, obviously, we went from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty five thousand. So that helped us bump it up as well. If we do have an increase this year based on the budget committee's recommendation to the board and the board adopts it. Then this will be an ultra conservative number and probably something that should go up. So what you have here. At the tentative level is you may wanna be more conservative on sales tax. But I would have to recommend that you are less conservative on this, that we are less conservative on this number. And probably bring it up to two hundred and fifty thousand instead of two oh one six hundred.
But is, is that a pa, isn't that a pass through number?
I mean. Yeah, but Nor, Nora, if we don't hit it, we still, we have to hit it. So.
But I guess my question is, if we're not, if we're not doing these extra details, if we're not taking in the money, we're also not expending the money.
Yeah, but there's a reason why we're not doing the detail. It's because it's still being done, but it's not being done with our workforce. So when you're an employee somewhere, working someplace. And you're accustomed to a certain amount of money extra in your check. If it's not in this, there may be other ways to come up with overtime. But this now is something that we can focus on getting reimbursed for the overtime. Right? And I may not have said it exactly the same way. In person, I might say it differently, but I think you know what I mean. So I have to be aware of that as well. The railroad resident, I gave you some information regarding our, our, our permits and our NRR permits. We have a lot of people calling us up, asking if they can buy the permit in June or July or August. And that is an indicator to me that we will have sales. We may have to cut a little bit regarding the projection, which we did already. We went from two fifteen to one seventy nine. Because of, we prorated. But our residents do not want to miss out on getting a railroad permit. And our outside residents who'd like to use our train station do not wanna miss out on getting. A, a, a non-resident railroad permit. As far as a GP, an off-street parking permit, that might be a different story. So we cut that down significantly from last year. We cut that over thirty percent. So it's a, it's a matter of what our residents need. And they definitely need that railroad permit, so they will purchase it as soon as they're told to go back to work. Mayor de Blasio said, May, New York City employees have to go back to the office on May third, so. I suspect others will as well. Climb up, Augie, please. Everything else is negligible. Page three. On street. On street has been reduced. On-street parking fees has been reduced. However, thank you to the board. We now have a new area for on-street parking. And that is Boston Post Road. My original estimates was eighty to a hundred thousand dollars that we'll receive in revenue there. I understand we have to change the law in order to enforce the on-street parking. But that doesn't stop Mr. Sarnoff and I from getting those multi-space meters and getting that, that process going right now. So even though we reduced on-street parking by ten percent. I think we're probably gonna have to adjust that number, the closer we get to budget adoption time.
Adjust it, adjusted higher?
Higher, yep. Yep, cuz originally when we put this. I'm gonna call it the January forecast. We put in seven forty nine. We're now at five ninety nine. We just didn't know what way we were gonna go with Boston Post Road. In addition to that, Mayor, not only is Boston Post Road gonna help, but what's also gonna help is the. Is the restaurants. The, the restaurants that want to. Pay for the parking spots that they wanna use for doubling their space outdoors. Which the board got an email about that today. Any questions on this page? There is a big increase in volleyball. Volley, volleyball is booming. If we had a beach three times the size of it, we would have probably seventy five thousand dollars in revenue from, from volleyball. That's how, that's how big it is right now. And that's just a shift in sports interest, really. Next page. We have. Augie, did we, did we adjust, did we adjust this to remove the, the Bleecker Beach? We didn't adjust it to remove it yet.
No, we can't. That has to be before the final budget is adopted.
Okay, so we had forecast twenty eight thousand eight hundred from Bleecker Beach. That will be removed from the fifty thousand. Okay, we have reduced a hundred and ten. Again, from the budget meetings that we had since the end of February to now. We understood a couple of budget committee members' comments, and so we reduced that from a hundred and ten to eighty nine thousand seven hundred. Field maintenance fees are gonna go up. As far as the Harbor Island Outdoor Concert, that will be eliminated. We have a couple of areas where we can make up that two hundred and thirty four thousand. I'll be able to demonstrate that once I do a little bit more research. What else do we have here? All small stuff. When you see a hundred percent increase, it's because we didn't have a soccer clinic last year. And now we have a two thousand dollar soccer clinic anticipated revenue, so it's a hundred percent increase.
Hey Jerry, Jerry, was that two hundred and thirty four thousand capital?
Two hundred and thirty four thousand was Capitol Theater, yep.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Hey Jerry, do we have any numbers from Sport Time?
Uh, no, we, uh, well, we'll get to that, right, Augie? That's not.
Yes.
That's the twelve five. We'll get to that.
Okay.
We'll get that.
We'll get to that. Next page, please. Kayak Tours, that's definitely, I have no problem. Telling you that, that we will have a five thousand with paddleboard and ten thousand with kayak tours. It boomed last year. But we did reduce some, some tennis here. Because we're looking at our actuals right now, Kelly. So we're bringing that number down a little bit. Day camp, we are at seventy percent. We still have another four days before we open it up to non-residents. So, so far, our capacity, we are at seventy percent sales. Just with Village of Amerenek residents. And so we will hit that number without concern on the, on the day camp registration. We'll spell out for day camp probably in the next week and a half. All the other stuff. Our beach, we had a good year last year. We're looking at the same type of year this year. That's where those numbers come from. So our actual seventy four hundred and twenty four, twenty five dollars that we made, that we made from non-resident. We anticipate the same. We just anticipate a mirror year in our, in our beach attendance. And I know people will eventually get on planes, but there'll be just as many people. Who just wanna stay home and stay close by and enjoy staycations. Page six. Oh, Augie, I'm sorry. I missed the floats. It was at the bottom. Moorings and, and, and our boats. Right? So we do have a slight decrease in that because it is a. Well. It's the type of thing where, you know, you have to have some expendable income in order to. In order to have a boat. And so we're anticipating a short, a short, a small reduction in that. Go ahead, Augie. Ramp fee, same thing. Glen Island is not open yet. But people apparently, from what I read, are walking there. So at some point, Glen Island will be back to normal and that will. All the people who used to go to Glen Island will, will stop coming to. To our harbor. Zoning planning, pretty flat, small reduction. I can't recall. Can you guys, Dan and Augie, can you remember why we reduced transport of prisoners? Cuz I can't remember now.
The, the county did something.
Formula on us?
The whole bail reform.
Oh, that's what it is. That's what it is. So there'll be less prisoners to transport. That's why we reduced that by almost half. The next page, page seven, top. Oh, wait a minute, yeah. Let me see here. What'd you have on the bottom there?
The selective enforcement and the bus shelters. That's.
Can we just call it enforcement instead of selective enforcement?
I'll look into that.
Yeah, so.
Pass it out or something.
Augie, the Village of Amerenek fully believes in the Fourteenth Amendment.
Interest earnings. That's a heck of a drop right there, right? And then there are some items. So here's the Sport Time, Kelly.
Yeah.
That we have.
Why did interest earnings drop so much?
Nobody wants our money.
Yeah, I, I gotta notice my savings account went from point oh two to point oh one.
Right. Now, that's where we are. We do have reductions in a few items. Regarding. Flagpole, which are, is our wireless rental. We have a reduction in the bait station. We renegotiated there to try to keep the vendor. And really, so I asked the question and Augie's staff can answer it. Without even thinking about it, the reason we are losing money or reduced money. We're anticipating a reduction in revenue from our. From our wireless. Flagpoles and powers is because there's less equipment apparently up there. And so they're getting less, so we're getting less. And that's not something that I can negotiate out until we renegotiate their, their agreement. And I, I apologize, I can't tell you when, when those negotiations come up.
Is that because carriers are going for five G?
I couldn't tell you. I'm not that smart.
No, we actually, we, we actually lost the carrier on the pole.
Yeah. So that's why the reduction there. Next page, page eight. Use the streets. It's just a guess, not really sure. How many? How many construction projects are going to utilize? The provisions that we have to allow them to use the streets. In addition to that, I think we get, I think we do use the streets. Dan, is the use of streets also the revenue from when a movie shoot wants to close down a street and?
I think we, we put all that into the film permits.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's some adjustments there in, in our permits. And then we're at seven hundred and fifty thousand at the very bottom. In fines and forfeitures. Now, I do have, Dan Sarnoff and I did receive communication from the courts and the judges. They're asking for the tent. We're opening up one sixty nine Mount Pleasant on April fifth. Court staff is at full strength, so we believe that that seven fifty should actually be eight fifty. And that'll absorb a hundred thousand dollars of the loss from the two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in the Capitol Theater. Cancellation. So instead of nine sixty, we're, we're, we're probably going to come in at around eight fifty on that. Because the courts are starting to open up and, and, and work. But you can see where we are regarding our payments from the courts. We anticipated nine hundred and sixty thousand. And we're at, what is it? Three oh seven, nine sixty nine as of right now.
That's pretty standard in other municipalities, right?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not them.
No.
And they're unwilling to work. It's the court's regulations and. You know, having, giving them the ability to work. That's the problem. They shut them down for a while. I mean, too long, but, you know, that's just my opinion. They shut them down for a long time, Nora. And they could have probably figured out a different way, but.
Choice is the court.
It's just how the court is, right? It's just how the court is. Page. We have another page? Is this the last? Oh, no, we have two more pages. Sales of equipment is going down, less, less equipment. I almost said junk that we have to get rid of. And. So, so, so Augie or Dan, remind me about the refund of prior year's expenses. What's with the swing? I've asked you before and I apologize, I can't remember. Two oh seven in twenty twenty, eighty three hundred. Eighty three hundred budgeted, forty one thousand. 8,300 budgeted 41,000. Now we're at 15.
This account, this account is pretty much unpredictable. Sometimes we get refunds. On utility bills that, you know, were overcharged and they're ordered by the utilities saying that they have to give a refund. It's all sorts of items that come in. It's an unpredictable account. This year, we're just budgeting 15,000 in here because because of its nature.
Yeah.
We don't know what's going to come in.
Yeah, we don't know what's coming in. Next page, please.
So so Jerry, just so you know also is that a lot of the FEMA that's coming in into the subsequent year will be posted to this account.
Okay.
That's another good item to show you.
Okay, great.
Sorry, I my computer froze, so.
It's all right, Dan, I had you covered.
Okay. Yep, he got you covered. There aren't many increases here. There's one. What is this? What's the bunny program?
Buckle up, New York.
Okay, that's all it is. Great. That concludes my boring presentation.
Are we going to do expenses?
No, not that way. 170 pages.
Okay, well, how are you going to do it?
I don't know. I don't know how I'm going to do it. That's that's a tough one.
But are there highlights? Are there other? What are the expenses that are going up? What are the expenses that are unanticipated?
So I'll give you, I'll give you. I give you a page. Of expenses that are going up that cause us trouble. Let me just get that real quick.
That's really what we need.
This is what causes us trouble. I'll be right. I'll be right with everyone now.
Can I ask a revenue question or do you want me to wait till the end?
Let's just wait till the end and you could ask away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
So so these are our problem children right here. This is the tough part, so. I can, I can explain to you what we're trying to do and then what we can't do is our hands are tied. Insurance, we are trying to. Work on those numbers a little bit more. Everyone on the board and maybe everyone on Budget Committee is aware that we had a. We renegotiated. I put a couple of companies against each other last year. We renegotiated insurance and were able to get a $200,000 reduction last year. Because of the pandemic, we have a increase and almost we're back almost. At in that ballpark, including workman's comp. So. What we did with workman's comp is we negotiated a two-year. Agreement. And what we budgeted this year, because I still don't have the workman's comp quote, which is another reason why. You know, doing revenue and expenses early is is a little tough for us, even at this time. It's a little tough for us. But we anticipated. The highest amount that we could possibly be charged based on our two-year agreement. Which was $152,000 more than $153,000 more than what it is already. What it is currently. What I can tell you is that I've I've spoken to our broker and to our workman's comp carrier. And in order to try to get this 152 anticipated increase down. I've asked them to come back to the table to renegotiate an additional two-year contract. So basically, I'm pulling the rug out from under them in year one to try to get a second. Two-year deal to try to reduce this number. But that's all stuff that I do that takes a little bit of time. So I don't have those projections yet. I don't have those numbers yet. So what we have to do is anticipate the highest number that we could possibly be charged. So this 1.315 million ideally. Could come down to about 1.2, 1.1.21. So we'd save 115 to 100, 115,000 dollars. We cannot do anything, Mayor, with pension. Pension is one of the biggest increases we've ever seen, I think we've ever seen. FICA is FICA and then health insurance again. If. If insurance companies. Didn't have a bad year last year, I don't know what year would have been a bad year for the insurance companies. So we're getting hit with increases and that's just how it is. Right? If the board has any specific. Questions regarding expenses. We can get to that page and we can talk about. Increase or the decrease. But it's 170 pages, so it's a lot. And we've already had all of our budget meetings, so we've gone through this book already.
Okay, in your latest version of the budget. Where you just under the tax cap, that includes the court clerk, right?
It includes the court clerk. It includes the senior. Office assistant that we talked about for the.
Court.
With for the.
Building or planning.
Department. It was planning and building. It was the, you know, was that the person who would be the conduit between the two departments? And I can't recall. Anything else. All the positions are unfrozen. So we anticipate coming into June at full staff. It'll take us a little time to unfreeze the positions into view and then hire. I can't think of much else as far as what we've added to the tentative budget. But we're right in under the cap. And the reason we got in, so obviously. In January, we gave you. A budget to look at that was 600,000 under the cap. A reduction. In revenue, anticipated revenue for sales tax plus a couple of other items. And then adding a few expenses put us right under the cap. By $446. Dollars. If there is a influx of money and I can tell you. How we'll get the money, I can't tell you the exact dollar amount, but the American Rescue Plan provides us with two payments. 90 days approximately from when the president signs. And then one year, exactly 12 months later, we will get the second payment. So. If we get the payment. Before June 1st, might be a small miracle, but if we get it after June 1st, we're not going to get the second payment until. Followed.
I I just emailed Tracy only at the town and asked her if she had a projection on what we'd get from the town.
But. Even even getting that payment, it's mostly reimbursing us for expenses that we incurred.
No, that's that's the FEMA. This is for lost revenue.
So the FEMA payment is mostly reimbursing for expenses.
Correct. This is to make us hold for lost revenue.
And it's 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 a little restrictive, Nora, but it's not too restrictive. It it, we can work with it. Based on what I've read, we can work with it.
When you say restricted, in what way, Jerry, are we?
Like, it may be difficult for us unless we can demonstrate, Dan, that we purposely. Postponed capital projects. It may be difficult for us. To use the money for capital projects. We may have to, we may have to purposely, we may have to, we're obligated to show. That we put off that capital project because of the pandemic and now we're resurrecting it. That's the little restriction caveat that I'm looking at now.
And that that triggers the amount of funding we would get.
The amount of funding, the way they distributed the amount of funding doesn't necessarily come from any budget. Operation that we're that we're currently in.
It's not like, but it's not like per capita. It's not.
Maybe, yeah, but I I it may be, I just don't know how they get it, yeah. I know, you know, I know the people on your side are getting 5 million and they're supposed to give us some. And I know the people on my side are getting 3 million and they're supposed to give us some. That's really all I know.
It is my understanding, my understanding is it is per capita.
But the two towns are supposed to be sharing with the with the with the villages within.
Yeah, yeah, what 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 happens is the towns, the towns are kind of the conduit. Because I guess the federal government doesn't want to get down to village levels.
So what would have happened if we'd eliminated the town of Rye?
We'd get it some other way because it's based upon per capita.
Just.
Yeah, we get it a different way. We get it, though.
But I think the regulations are not not being released finally, so this is all. It's all just general comments and we have, we'll have to look at those regulations when they come, so it's the money and the regs. Put that together and then so more.
Right.
We're we're ahead of us, but not now.
But the takeaway I'm getting from what you've said, Jerry, is that we cannot take that money. And use it for anything for operating expenses. It could only be for capital budget items. Is that correct?
No.
Or did I misinterpret what you were saying?
No, I may have misspoke, we misinterpreted. We may not be able to use it for capital items, capital budget items unless we can demonstrate we did not. We we canceled those capital budget items because of the pandemic. We can use it. To absorb some of our operating losses. For instance. If we have a reduction in fines and forfeitures, Dan, of 100 of 250,000. We could use the money into in and put it in our operating expenses to absorb what we lost last year. That's why I reduced the fines and forfeitures. So we lost money, we lost money because of the pandemic in court fees. We're putting money back in in court fees this year.
Same is true of parking.
We can put it in parking, everything that was related to the pandemic. Budget impact.
Camp. Camp.
What camp, those kinds of things.
Camp fees.
Right. But like, for instance, if we budgeted a million dollars last year for roads and we didn't do roads. Then we could have used that money this year to do a million dollars worth of roads. That's my quick take, but Victor's right. We don't have the absolute guidelines and we probably won't have them for a little while. They come from the higher ups.
Anybody else on the board with the, before I go to Ellen, anybody else on the board with questions? Okay, Ellen?
Hi, so Jerry, you had mentioned we're not getting that revenue from the Capitol Theater. So does your projection of us coming in right under the cap include that 234,000?
No, I've made adjusted, I've made adjustments already to the tentative budget for that.
Okay. So we're still good without that revenue.
We will be, yeah.
Okay, and Charles has been emailing me. He's raising his hand. He'd like to be promoted.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to get to the hand raised right now.
Okay, great.
Why we do Charles first? And can we, can we stop sharing the screen?
Oh, yeah, sure, of course. Thanks. Sorry about that. There we go.
So I think Augie needs to promote Charles.
Yeah. Well, you got that?
Yes, he just says unmute his mic.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Fantastic. What a relief. I've been on. But have not been. Not been on. Thank you.
Charles, do you have anything for us as far as questions or comments on what you heard or that's why I think we moved you up to panelist?
Appreciate it. Yeah, I I was trying to interject at the time and it wasn't working. So I don't want to completely digress, but I I think it was good news that. The lower revenue number, as I saw it on the spreadsheet at the 2.7, was actually tying into the total at the 500,000 net.
Yep.
So that's that's fantastic.
Yep.
And, you know, with that, just that you guys considered, you know, if the 2.7 was an anomaly. That you pulled down from the 3.9 to the 3.6 and. Are you comfortable with the assumptions at the 3.6, given that we were at the 2.7 for this? Fiscal projection?
It's a, it's a, it's our best estimate. Based on, based on what we think, you know, will happen. But, you know, I don't disagree with trustee Tofor's approach, looking at others and seeing what they. What they. What their, what their best estimate is as well. I don't disagree with that. I think that that's important to look at, but. At some point, you know, things will will. A lot of people are tired of of. Of how it's been, so I think there'll be a lot of activity going on.
Was there anything in the 2019 number that was just over a million? That in itself might have been an anomaly that we could learn from and roll that into the assumptions?
Dan, Augie?
You don't, you talk about the sales tax.
I think I've had.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean. And the best estimate I get is it's we're, we're getting a million dollars a quarter. There are four quarters in a year. That's.
I I think one of the things we have to look at when we're projecting about next year. You know, I I go to the New York Times every morning. I go to the website of projections of, you know, COVID vaccinations. And it keeps getting lower and lower and 70% of the population. Is supposed to be vaccinated by sometime in June. So, you know, I I think early in our fiscal year, we will have reached herd immunity. Which I think is going to, you know, rebound in the the economy's favor, but you know, listen, I'm not an economist, but I. I do know that there's a lot of pent up anxiety as Jerry talked about. I mean, I can't wait to get away.
So Tom, Tom, I get Cuomo's email every day. As of yesterday, today's hasn't come out yet. Close to 14% of New York State's population has received both shots.
Right, right. I'm talking about the projection, yes, and.
Yep.
It's it's looking hopeful, thank God.
So so if we, we also look at it as as consumers at times too. For instance. I, we cooked a lot at home. We 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 bought a lot of takeout. We didn't go to restaurants too much. We're starting to go to restaurants again. Where I don't recall ever holding back on a purchase because it's the pandemic. I know that cars still are are selling. I I. I don't see where activity will decrease so much that we will be off by our number, on our numbers. In this coming year. I think it will be a. As normal as it can be after July 1st.
And you're and you're comfortable that that the 3.6 would be consistent with normal, if you will, you know. Moving averages and weighted averages in prior fiscal.
Yeah. Yeah, because Charles, we got hit with the pandemic during the transition year when we were going to go, when we, when we got our 1% increase. So we were. We got that 1% increase and then how many months later, four, five, seven months later, we got hit with the pandemic? So, so and then, you know, that panic sets in, nobody does anything. I think the the 3.6 could work if if we need to. Run that number down a little bit, that's that's up to the board. This is the, this is the time when when they can. When they can look at that and analyze that. And of course, we will assist them like we always do. And there are some numbers that I want to increase as well.
I I just want to point out for people who are watching from home, when Jerry says a 1% increase in the sales tax. What it means is a basis point of 1%. Westchester County was at 7.78 or something like that, sales tax. George Latimer went to Albany and got it up to 8.8. So it's not, you know, the the total amount of sales tax wasn't increased just by 1%. It was increased by whatever that is, 15, 16%. wasn't increased just by one percent. It was increased by, I don't know, whatever that is, fifteen, sixteen percent. So I did, and I know everybody here understands that, but I know there's gonna be people at home that hear one percent and not have the context.
And the CX, and the county exec was nice enough to share thirty percent with villagers and towns.
Yes. Mr. Natchez?
Two things. One is I share your desire that hopefully by summer, we're in good shape. But I'm taking a look at what's going on in other countries. And the third wave, if you will, that is hitting. And this is, this is a grave concern that we need to be aware that this, that we may be in that position. Hopefully not, but I don't think we just can ignore it. The other question I have is it appears that we are growing our our expenses faster than we are growing our revenue percentage wise. And that, and part of that is because of increasing staff. And I'm just wondering what that, what that forecast on a long-term basis and budgeting. Whether, whether Jerry or Augie can give a perspective on that?
I can give a perspective on potentially increasing staff. And that might be that we may have added a few positions. But what I, what I think naturally occurs when a new manager comes in is that they look at some of the objectives and some of the goals that they have, that they share with the Board of Trustees regarding doing some things that may not have been done in the past or that requires some assistance. So there's a little bit of adjustment that occurs. You know, we, we did, we did break out the HR department, which the manager's office shared with the perpetrator's office with their, you know, obligation for payroll. And we created a new, a new department there. That department has been invaluable during the pandemic and for a lot of other reasons. Really, we have achieved a level where now all of our obligations regarding the state and the federal laws are followed through and not missed. So there's some adjustment there, but I don't know, I'd have to really see if our revenue and our expenses are keeping pace because every year, they're not keeping pace because every year we're presenting a budget that's that covers our expenses. And so if there's some reduction in some supplies or some contract services and an increase in some, some, some staff, it balances itself out. I can tell you that you know how I work to manage the engineer's office. But we don't have an engineer. We rely on a outside engineer. I manage that engineer, a consulting engineer very closely. I've shared with you recently, we've only spent about twenty-five thousand dollars this year with our consulting engineer for all village-related items that our village engineers used to do. Aside from what we're doing with Save the Sound and those kinds of things, but so there's, you know, there's adjustments when, when new people come in. I'm that new person. As far as what you said about the potential for another surge, just like I made an agreement with you last year, we'll look at this budget again in December. And if I have to freeze positions, because obviously every year naturally we have retirements and we have, you know, losses through, through other methods of, of staff. If I have to hold off on stuff, on, on rehiring people in November and December because we're really off on our projections, we'll go through the same exercise. We're not just doing the budget once, Dan. We're doing the budget all year long. And if we have to make a pause, if we have to have a pause, we'll pause it for a little while, just like we did this year. No one was happy with the restrictions and the embargo. I love that word. Nobody was happy with the restrictions that I put in place, but we, we needed to do it and that was my, that was my commitment to the board. We have to do it, we will.
And last, let's bear in mind, you know, we, we, we added a court clerk that the board wanted to add to help the court. And, you know, that, that's a position that we, we deal with the expensive now too.
I mean, but the court clerk had been in the budget. It wasn't a new position.
It's funny enough.
I get, I, I'm just just following up on Dan's. One of the big problems with this year's budget that we had no control over was the pension costs and the health insurance costs. So those go up when we add new people. So I think maybe that's what Dan is getting to. It's not so much the salary, but it's the fact that we then keep piling on the fringe benefit costs.
So, so as we add a new person, right, we have an obligation. It's, what's it, six percent? I think it's six percent, right, of their salary, the budget. You, you, it's a six thousand dollar increase on a hundred thousand dollar employee. Right? We're not adding, not adding a hundred employees to get to that six hundred thousand dollar number. That's the state pension system hitting us hard because interest revenue, they're not making any money on interest. They're just not.
No.
They turn it on us. We do have some, some, some adjustments in staff, we do. But I don't think we have a large increase in staff. That's not that's not appropriate. In fact, we have a we have a decrease in some departments in staff. Parks, we're not replacing, we just had an individual leave us for another job. That, that, that number stayed zero. But yeah, departments do ask for some adjustments. The court, the, the actual increase in the court is a part-time and going to full-time. That's the actual increase. We did have a part-timer for a long period of time. She is now a full-time employee. And so there is.
But a full-time employee left.
No. No, so, so we had, so if you're talking about court clerk, I'm talking about part-time, part-time, and then now cashier. We had an unfilled position for many, many, many years as a cashier in the court. They asked for additional staff. They asked for, basically directly, they asked for a part-timer to be made full-time and assume that cashier position, which had not been funded for, for many years.
The FD, yeah. The FD only increased by one half. But a perfect example is you look at, even with the addition of the senior court clerk to the third floor at one sixty-nine, the overall headcount remains the same as compared over the last two years. You know, that's partially achieved by using the consulting services for the, the planner, as well as when an assistant code enforcement officer left for another job opportunity a year ago, we replaced that with two half-time individuals. So while we still have the same headcount officially, there's actually been a reduction in some of the benefits because we went to part-timers.
Went to part-timers. So we went to part-timers. Another reason we went to a couple of part-timers in the building department is because those two gentlemen have other jobs and at times are available to work for us in the weekends. Where I couldn't necessarily do that without an overtime situation for a full-timer.
No, and that makes total sense.
Yeah. And then we do have a full-time code enforcement officer, which she was nice enough to be able to accept the fact that I needed to shift her schedule a little bit. On Wednesdays and Thursdays, she comes in at one o'clock and leaves at nine o'clock. I have the nighttime enforcement. So that's what I'm talking about when I was answering Dan's questions as far as the adjustments. I'll make the adjustments as the operation requires.
Okay, I think Mr. Tippett has his hand up. Glenn, unmute yourself or Augie, unmute him, whoever.
He has done to mute himself.
Glenn, you want to talk? Unmute yourself, buddy. Hi, Glenn.
Hello? Yeah, you're on. Okay. Um, few things, sales tax, I don't have a problem with. We have, um, the Florence Park, forty thousand dollars for tennis. Never did that before.
That's correct.
I'm not sure if you're gonna see that number. We have a fifty thousand dollar increase in daily beach passes from a record year. That number seems a little bit on the high side. Uh, for the, for the courts, you might not see that revenue back to normal because we no longer arrest people for minor marijuana charges. And people who are gonna be arrested for drug charges, I believe they're trying to get them into the drug court. So you're not gonna see those fines, which is one of the reasons why the revenue is down. Um, police details. Do we pay out of our budget when we have sewer or water openings and we need a detail for the police? Because next year, you're starting a five million dollar sewer project. Is that gonna be coming, the police detail be coming out of the operating budget? Or is that gonna be charged to the capital budget with the sewer repairs?
So when the sewer repairs, when the sewer repairs, Glenn, for next year, it's manhole to manhole. And so what this company will do is not necessarily rip open roads, but we have to do, they may park themselves in a lane for a little while with the proper spacing of cones, so people go around them. And they'll be, we talked about that and I'm managing that project as well. We talked about the requirement of police and there's very few streets, so that number will be low. There will be a few areas, but that number will be very low. It's not like the extensive work that, that Con Ed, Con Ed is ripping us apart. I mean, we're like Swiss cheese right now. So.
And on the court fine?
To the CHIPS program, which we haven't seen any revenue from since two thousand and sixteen. We have CHIPS, we have New York paving, we have extreme weather paving. We haven't seen any revenue from any of those programs since two thousand and sixteen.
Can I tell you why? Can I tell you why?
We have. We haven't paid. We have not received a penny from CHIPS.
Let him explain why. Go ahead, Glenn.
Glenn, let me explain why. So because we didn't do any paving until two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. So now our application has been submitted to get reimbursement. You have to do the work in order to get, in order to get your CHIPS money. If you never do your work, you're never gonna get any CHIPS money. So we put in an application of one point two million dollars, plus or minus, I forget the exact number. We just put in an application of one point two million dollars for reimbursement of CHIPS on a three point two million dollar paving project.
Okay.
You haven't seen it.
Have we also done that with New York pave and extreme weather paving?
It's all reimbursed and it's all, it's all money that we've had to spend, which we did, we paid the bill and bonded, and now we're getting our money back. Yes.
Just, just one thing on, on the court fines, the court fines, it's, there are three items that make up the court fines.
Right.
It's parking tickets, moving violations and building code violations. By, by far, the parking and moving violations, I, I think it's gotta be ninety percent of that overall number. So the, the drug court, the drug fines, that's not included in, in the court fines.
It's not in that number, Glenn.
Okay. Look, it's the, the overall spending. Then on the other side, on the spending side, the big one I find is sorcerorities. We haven't increased them yet. I read the Village of Monomaric tentative report. And one of the sections is funding for sorcery at this stage of the budget process, based on current projected sorcery. And the fact that several large sororities are anticipated, the village is increasing the total appropriation of this item to six hundred and eighty thousand. Then we didn't increase it.
All right, so if I can say something about that.
Go ahead.
We, we've kept it flat, but if we get hit with a really bad year, we may have to make a budget adjustment and that's just how it is. But to increase taxes just because we might get hit with a bad year may not be the, because once you increase taxes, I mean, I don't know if you ever remember taxes going down. So if you have to make an adjustment, you make the adjustment because you're having the bad year. But so far, we've been able to live within the, what is it, guys, three seventy?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three fifty, Glenn. So we've been able to live within the three fifty and it does take quite a while. You know, we may get hit with a, a tax sorority demand of, of a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand at some point, because we have properties like that. But, but to increase taxes just because we might have a bad year, I'm not sure if that's the right way to go. That's just me talking. I'm, I'm just telling you like it is.
I, I just, I just want you to be aware, the, every, I see places in the budget where, on the revenue side, where I think there's fat. I see ones where I'm not quite sure, but it's based on a really nice summer. At the very least, because if we have a cold summer, a rainy summer, uh, a lot of these numbers are not gonna come in. A lot of them are based on the fact we got beach, we have parking at the harbor and such like that. Uh, the other thing we don't have is we have absolutely nothing for capital spending. In the past years, we would build up a number of capital items. Augie would bond some of them and we would take money out of our general fund and pay some capital items, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and twelve. Right now, what we're doing is we're running a deficit and the problem I have, no, no, for this year, we're running six hundred thousand dollar out of, out of the general fund if everything comes in perfect. My problem is there's nothing left over to reduce capital spending for smaller items because we're gonna have to bond a lot of large items. That's gonna come up with the capital spending. I got thirty million dollars out of, out of that you need bonded for four, for four items if you plan to do them. You can't be bonding large items and also bond four wheels all over the place. We already have one point two million dollars worth of things that we have purchased this year that are not bonded, that need to be bonded next year or paid for somehow next year. That weren't bonded. This year's bond basically went for last year's items. You can't bond three to five million dollars worth of projects and not have any money left for the large projects. So I would say the best thing to do is you're gonna pass the budget in October, you can see how your summer, summer numbers came in. Uh, in, in June, have a contingency plan. If the, if for some reason we have a wet rainy summer and your projections are coming in on the light side, I think that you should have a backup plan at that. Do you need a hiring freeze at that time? What adjustments do you need for the budget? And over the long term, you're gonna have to figure out how you can afford both short-term projects and long-term projects, because I'm telling you, when Jerry comes with that capital budget list, we did not get to a lot of them this year. That budget list is gonna be eight pages long of different projects from different departments. And I'm telling you, of the eight pages, I can take four or five projects out that is gonna run the village thirty million dollars.
Okay, yeah, you made that point.
Be aware that the operating budget also has to pay for some of the capital budget at some time. Even if it's in the capital budget, you, you still have to come up with money to pay. You cannot, you cannot borrow money.
Glenn, Glenn, you're repeating yourself. You've made these points, they're covered. You've made them.
Glenn, that's been, that's been part of our point all along is
Yeah, you've made it.
Nothing left over to spend, capital projects.
Still making it. Let's go to Charles, who's got his hand up.
Thanks, Tom. Just, just at a fifty thousand foot level, and I think, you know, Len had indicated it, you know, in his introduction. Thanks, Tom. Just, just at a fifty thousand foot level, and I think, you know, Len had indicated it, you know, in his introduction. Just to consider taking a, a look at the percent increase on the expense side versus prior years. Which seems to be a little lighter than it was historically. And you're obviously making assumptions line by line with the expenses to arrive at the projections, which are very real. But maybe to try to identify some of those variances that drove the net expense increase being lighter than some of the historical.
He's scared of Jerry's capital.
What's that?
Like, what do you, so, so Charles, I, I, I think, when we're looking at, when we're looking at. When you're, what you're asking is. And I don't know if Augie had a question or not, because I, I just, I just heard him say something, but.
So, we're talking about the capital plan, and it's a five year plan.
And, sorry, I wasn't talking about the capital, yeah.
Okay, okay, you're talking about operating.
Yeah, just, yeah. I, I, I know Len had made the point upfront. We had attempted an analysis. We, we appear to have arrived at that the current percent increase for the forward looking budget. Was lighter than the expense increases over prior years.
Yes, that's correct.
And were you guys able to identify what drove that?
The, the reduction?
The, the reduction in terms of the percent increase.
Some of the, some, so my directive early on was to the, in December was to the department heads to bring down. Supplies and to bring down contract services. So that we can absorb some of these costs by pension and others.
Ten percent was a directive. Point two and point four codes.
Right. That's, that, I never issued that directive for capital. I issued it for operating, for our operating budget.
Or, or did you want to address some of the issues that were raised?
Well, what Glenn was talking about, I wasn't sure. We have a five year capital plan, which basically the board has to adopt. All the funding from that capital plan is usually through the issuance of a bond or short term borrowing. It's, it's not from the operating fund.
I think what, the other thing Glenn was referring to is, a couple of years ago, the board had set up commitments of cash. I think that came from our surplus at the end of each fiscal year to pay for certain projects. I, if, if, that's, that's a, yeah, and we do that now, that's a separate, that's a discussion. If, if the board wants to look at, you know, setting up a, a capital reserve funded by some mechanism. Maybe the fund balance or something like that, that, that's a good discussion to have at some point. I, I don't, that, don't know if that's a discussion the board wants to have tonight.
But Glenn's talking about setting up a reserve, so that you can pay for the small items while you're bonding the big items. That's, that's. But we don't have that mechanism right now. We just don't have it.
Yeah, but it's, it's a, it's a great conversation to have.
Charles, did, did Augie and I answer your question regarding, how did you come up with that reduction in expenses?
You, you, you did, and it's something that we've looked at in the context of the ten percent, and, and with the. The employee comp and benefits accounting for such a disproportional component of the expenses. We were trying to unpack that, whether the ten percent on that remaining non benefit. Component would have been enough to explain the, you know, disconnect with the year over year percent increase. And it, it, it may very well have, but then, you know, that, if, if that's something you've looked at and are comfortable with. We just wanted to point that out, that. We weren't certain that the ten percent would have been enough, and were there other line items that assumptions would have been made that would have moved more dramatically than the ten? With the budgeted number.
So it would be difficult for us to move salaries, because that would, that would require existing employees and impact on existing employees. And I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't interested in doing that.
Exactly, and, and we, and we, we assumed that, and, and it might suggest that there were. Reductions above the ten percent in, you know, on the other line items that, you know, attributed to the. To the, to the year over year reduction.
So, so the year over year, one component that may have occurred inadvertently, but luckily. Is that some of the reductions last year in the pandemic plan. When we came back with 2.5 million dollars in cuts from what we, from the budget that we were going to present. May have followed through in this year as well. So if a department head cuts an item, realizes that he can continue, she can continue to live with that cut. Then there's no reason to introduce that back into the budget. And then on top of that, look at other items where we can continue to reduce it at my directive of hopefully, you know, ten percent or so. So that could be the component that we may not be thinking about, that there were reductions. Significant severe reductions last year in a lot of items that may not have been reintroduced this year.
The only thing that I would like to add, which we had included in our capital planning recommendations. Was to make sure if there are any new bonds issued during the fiscal year. That that debt service, even though it doesn't exist today, but that future debt service is included in the operating budget.
That's almost.
Go ahead, Glenn, go ahead, Augie. I, I was ready to go.
We, we have a capital budget that's well over thirty million dollars. I don't know what the board's gonna approve or not approve. From that wish list. It's hard for me to raise taxes or to budget something that the board hasn't approved yet. I, I don't know how to do that.
I appreciate that, but.
Are they gonna invest the fifteen million on rebuilding the seawall this next year? Are they gonna invest in a new sanitation truck? I don't, I don't, I have no way to get that information.
Right, but we don't want to have that budget deficit either. Because then we're either transferring from someplace or.
Well, once a capital, but, once a capital budget is approved, from the Board of Trustees, it's put in the capital fund. And at the end of the year, we go out and bond for it. And those principal and interest payments are put into the subsequent year's budget.
Right, but this year, Augie, you issued bonds during the fiscal. So I'm just saying.
We issued bonds during the fiscal year for the previous year.
Yeah.
Right, all I'm saying is, to the best that we can, if there's any increase in debt service. Due to bonds issued during the fiscal year, we have that included in the operating budget. That's all I'm saying.
It is a year, a year later.
It is, but a year later.
The capital, capital expenses are, are, we are paying cap, you know, interest on capital expenses. For last year's and, and prior years borrowing.
Right, but there might be.
In this fiscal year will occur on the books next year.
Okay, so I'm playing, making up a scenario. Let's say we issue bonds in August. We're gonna have principal and interest payments this fiscal year. Would those payments be included? That's where I'm coming from.
Those payments would be included in the subsequent year's budget. So right now, about a month ago, I issued a bond for five million. Those principal and interest payments are in the twenty twenty two budget.
Right, and did, but if you have to make a payment. If you issue a bond and you, we need to make any P and I payments in that current fiscal year. We should have that covered, the budget to the best of our ability. I appreciate you don't always know. I'm just saying, we should include something.
But Ellen, it would always be the subsequent year, the payments. If you issue a bond in August. The payments for that bond will always be in the subsequent year. It would never be in the current year.
We don't do six month payments?
Only a year.
It's not like buying a car and making the, the, the payment on the car the following month while you're enjoying the car. It's not like that.
I know, a lot of bonds do quarterly P and I, you know, semi annual.
Okay, it's the year.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Alright, uh, it's seven. It's a little after seven. I'm gonna call it a night and we'll pick this up. And, you know, could, could you give us, you know, when, when we talk about capital. Could we get debt that's currently on the books, debt that's gonna be retired? In the, you know, when that debt gets retired, so that we can have an idea of how to, as my girlfriend would say, schedule.
I will send out the schedules to everybody.
Schedule.
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 I have a question, I have a, a, an ask of the board. If the board has any specific timing requirements. For any changes in the capital budget, because some items are going to be dropped off, some items may be added. I need to know that before the meeting, so I need to have my deadline. If, if the board can share that deadline with, with me now. Our meeting is April thirteenth, I think.
When do you need that information by?
I want to ask you when you, when you want it, to review it.
When, when would feasibly, you, you give it, you know, April first?
I can get, I can give it to you, I can't give it to you April first, because I'll still be on vacation, but I can give it to you. A week from April first. I can give it to you on the eighth or the seventh. I can do that. Alright, I'll give you the sixth, the sixth or the seventh. What do you, go ahead, Nora.
Two things, I just, Victor dropped out now, oh, now he's back into a panelist, it's okay.
No, he's not, he's not on my screen. He disappeared.
The sixth to the seventh? Now he's back on.
Okay, I see him now, I see him now. The sixth or the seventh, I'll get it to you, the sixth or the seventh. I'll try to get it to you seven days prior to our meeting, so you can review it and take a look at it. Because it's not, there's not a lot of changes, but there will be some changes.
Okay.
That are, you know, of note.
Okay.
And I think, do we. Charles had a question, and Glenn had a question. Now Charles' hand is down, maybe that was.
Oh, I, I'll, I'll just. Interject that we had probably touched on this, on this at the start of the meeting, and it is now getting late, but. To have tried to use tonight to at least start the conversation on the capital budget, we did touch on some items. But being limited to, to one meeting collectively, when you're gonna be getting respective feedback from each other. To then have to become comfortable with decisions is challenging. And is there a way to afford being able to get the, the input collectively as a group? Digest that and then be able to come back again collectively with a decision making process and, and how that would unfold.
Well, I, I think the decision making processes, you know, the boards to make about what capital projects they're gonna prioritize in the coming year.
Absolutely. Does, does, does the one meeting, you know, afford enough time to, to do that?
Well, I would think so. But, you know, we, we, you know, we, we're getting information out of, it's not gonna be ready until the seventh, and that gives us a week to digest it. If we have the meeting on the thirteenth and find that we need more time, we can quickly schedule a meeting after the thirteenth.
Sounds, sounds good.
You know, we had, we're trying to schedule another BOT meeting. And we opened, we picked the twentieth and the twenty first, and that seems to be good for most people. Do we want to pencil it in just so? Because it was so hard to schedule the, this next meeting, we're doing it April twentieth or twenty first.
Why don't we just see how it works on the thirteenth, because we already have the twentieth and the twenty first, and we could add it later on.
Well, I'm saying, why don't we reserve both of those days? One for the meeting, the training meeting, and one for this meeting, just so we have it, and we all, it's all, it's all on.
I, I'd rather, we, we would have enough time on the thirteenth to do that.
If everybody was still free. I mean, that was the problem. We, our dance card, dance cards were all full.
Let, let's, please, let's just see what we, you know, have to do on, I don't, we, we're gonna have to start charging overtime for this gig here.
I understand, but those, those points of view, but I think. Trying to just pencil them in and hold the dates would, would keep. You know, because we all get demands on our time, you know, for things that come up in, you know, other meetings. So if those, if those two dates are available, let's hold them, and we don't have to use them, and we don't have to notice them. But just, you know, as gentleman's approach, and gentleman's and ladies approach.
Okay, but on our own personal calendars, you can keep it free, and on the thirteenth, if we decide we need it, you will have it free. So there you have it.
If we, if we, if we hold the dates of the twenty first and the twenty second and say, we're scheduling, they will be used. And so, you know, when the email went around, are you free on the twenty first or the twenty second? Yes, those dates, it wasn't like both of those dates worked.
Yeah, it was like.
Another meeting that we have to have. If we're going to have to have this meeting, I think, given our ability to schedule things quickly. Saying on the thirteenth, we need another meeting, and we're gonna schedule it the next week before we adopt the budget, really means we're not gonna have that second meeting. If we need a meeting that week, there really isn't gonna be time for it. Because we're not gonna be able to schedule it a week in advance, because everybody's so busy. But, so.
I'm, I'm just, I'm saying I'll keep, I'll keep the date open, but I'm not gonna like make a formal thing in it. If we need it on the thirteenth.
Whatever day we don't schedule the other meeting, I'll keep the date open too.
Yeah. But I, I'm just saying, if, if you, if you, if you write them both in stone, we're just gonna be dragging this out. And I've never had a more than two meetings on, on a capital plan.
Well, we've never adopted a five year capital plan either, so.
Well, I've been in other municipalities that did.
Can we, can we adjourn, please?
You wanna make a motion?
I will make a motion, adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Budget Committee.
Aye.
Thank you, staff. Bye, thank you, trustees.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.